Another one.
All right, it's recording, so whenever you like to start, you can.
Okay, I'll start this because I think Jennifer said she was traveling in transit. It's November 18th, we have a special meeting to cover the CWPP plan and HLP, a response to the HLP draft work plan. I'm not going to read all of the, actually I will, I'll read the standard. Goodwater Supervisors Subject to Alaska Open Meetings Act has found Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. Goodwater Supervisors operates under good public meeting standards of conduct. And I will call the meeting to order at not quite 7:00 PM, but at 10:03. Land acknowledgement, I'm going to read it this time. The Goodwood Border Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous people of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Goodwood, situated between the areas known to be Denainer and Alutik homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Goodwood Valley for present and future peoples. Time for a roll call, please Kyle.
I'll go ahead, Brian Bernand.
Present.
Brianna Sullivan.
Present.
Jennifer Wingard. She might be having trouble coming off me. Kelly Oknak.
Present.
Hi, Kedington.
Present.
Okay, and I see Jennifer, I just wasn't able to hear her response.
I think Jennifer, as soon as you can, can you just confirm, confirm you have audio? And then we'll, we'll move on from there. Okay. Announcements, public is encouraged to ask questions, provide comment, please raise your hand away to be acknowledged, help discussions stay productive, direct your comments to the board rather than other members of public, keep your comments focused on business under discussion, and be respectful of everyone's opinions. Agenda, we can't modify because it's a special meeting, but I will, I will entertain a motion to accept it, to approve.
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, can I have a second? Okay, any, any discussion? Any objection? Okay, we'll go forward and accept the agenda. Let's just dive straight into item number one. Review and vote regarding GBOS letter regarding HLP. I think the, just for context, I listened to the recording of the meeting last week. It seemed like there was really good discussion. And I see the summary that Kyle has prepared. What I think we should do is let Kyle or Margaret lead this particular, probably Kyle, explain how he's organized that document, and then we will, we will go through it.
Margaret, do you want to pull that up, or you want me to? You're muted too.
Seems to be the morning of audio issues.
Okay, can you scroll to the top? So I just went through and tried, and you'll see the kind of color code, it just relates, I just tried to put together what topics were the same. And, 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 you know, and each one is different comments from each person, so I tried to show that. Some of them were combined just the way they went, but as you can see, they're related to individual parcels or topics within the plan. The first pages up to 12 are more of the overview. And then once we get into 12, we have it there. And there were public who had comments at that meeting, mostly Amanda and Crystal. So I did include their comments in here as they were part of the system, overall discussion.
Okay, I think everyone's probably also received public comments by email from Christina. As well, I don't know if we want to incorporate those, or at least pay attention to those as we go through and decide what our comments will be. Would it be possible to make the screen slightly larger? I'm on a laptop, so I've limited, limited screen estate, thank you, that's great. Okay. Let's start at the beginning and churn through. Do we want to say anything about the, do you want to say anything about the earliest, earliest first few pages? Okay, so let's move to, let's start at page 12. It might be useful to have the document available as well, although I don't know if, you know, when we need to, we may want to go into, go to the document. See if you can have that ready, Kyle. Or Margaret. I'm not sure who's, who's pressing the buttons today.
I think Margaret's got it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so. So this is organized by page rather than topic. So one of the things that I find confusing about this document every time is there's kind of some repetition between, you know, something that's ongoing will be discussed in the project section, in past work, and then in two, sometimes even three places elsewhere in the document. So I think we're, I think that's just inevitable, and that repetition is something we'll have to deal with, but and I know we're going to come across that, we're probably going to make some, we're going to have duplicative comments. Okay, so let's start on page 12 then. So project industrial park. Is everyone okay with incorporating the, the thank you? Support made progress on this area?
Yes.
Okay, if we could, perhaps we can just add a column F about whether we're, whether we're incorporating or not. So I think that would be a yes to row five. Okay. Six. I think the parcel have been transferred to CY Investments and which have been not. I didn't, I understand the point. I'm not sure. I think that information is provided elsewhere, perhaps just a, I, what they could do is update that section, that description, because I think that description was written a few months ago and things have changed since. Any other comments on line six? Has anyone got any suggested language for how we phrase that?
No, I don't.
Okay, so perhaps just we can actually, I'll throw something out there then. So we should, we should say something like, can you, can you update the, update the description of the project to reflect the, you know, the status at the time of the draft submission to assembly, something like that.
That sounds good.
So we're replacing this language then?
Yes, I think so.
That way it's like.
Actually, yes, that's better, that's better, yes, thank you.
The way it's more up to date.
Something like that?
Yes, thank you, and we can probably change the column A as well to be GBOS. Okay. Under land management. What has not been completed in 2025. Okay. Any objections or concerns about that?
I would ask Brian if he meant, if there were some things that were in 25 that were supposed to be done in 25 that we're referring to specifically? Like, I don't know what they started or didn't start. Do we need an example?
No, I don't know of any examples of, of what they either, I don't know of a list of site inspections going into it. Like, for instance, at the bottom of page 12, I mean, 12, they, they talk about site inspections, but they don't give a list of what they were looking to go do, or a much of a site by site notice. And so, of course, we have no site inspections on any of the, any of the levees or flood control in the valley.
I did not reread the 2025 plan. Was that, was that stated as something they would be doing in 2025? I think, I think your general point here is well taken though, that the, in any plan that's year to year, it would be really helpful to see what they promised they would do in 2025, not just the list of what they did, but a list of what they promised versus what they did.
Yeah.
So I think that's a really good point. The levy, the levy looks like one example, but I don't remember if it was definitely in there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall either, but it's, it seems like this, this document seems to be way more of a summary.
Right.
Than it is of a looking ahead. Even though it's supposed to be a, you know, a, you know, a action document looking down the road.
Right. Does anyone, while I'm chairing, I don't want to be trying to find other documents at the same time. So if anyone has the opportunity to find the 2025 plan, it might be useful to, to just check if the levy was mentioned, and then we can refer back to it directly. But I think what I'd like to do, if it's okay, is just keep this, keep this open and then come back to it. And then move on to line eight, because I think, I think there's either, there's a general point here, and it'd probably be good to have a list of, at least one or two things that we know were mentioned in 2025 and are not mentioned in the current plan. Okay, let's move on to page 15. Any comments on line eight?
Support and the funding is the stressing question.
Yes.
If anyone wants to rephrase it, but if it makes.
I think that's good, or determined funding maybe is the only modest slight tweak I'd make. Yep, and number nine, I think these tie, these obviously tie together in the same thing, but we can just combine them. So actually, because they're approaching the same thing, I guess it's the, we could, we can combine those to just, you know, determine funding for realignment and improvement of the trails, the trail through Holden Hills and for increased usage forecasting of lower. Kind of magic seeing the words appear on the screen silently. That's great, so I think line eight, that replaces line nine then. Yep. Everyone's okay with eight? Okay, let's move, keep moving forwards. So line 10, again, we just have to, we'll just use the language GBOS supports valuation of this process for disposal.
Sorry, Mike, could I back up one second?
Yeah, sure.
And we were going to skip that part from line nine, but I just really want to, I just wanted to quickly throw out, I wonder if the phrasing there is better? The phrasing from line nine that says increased usage forecasted from phase one development of Holden Hills, is that better than neighborhood use? I just wanted it to be specific with an understanding that this is from Holden Hills, not, you know, general, I don't know, sudden neighborhood, anyway, I just wanted to throw that possibility out there.
Yeah, I think we could just take that second part, the phrase increased usage, et cetera.
Thank you, sorry.
I agree. Okay, thanks. 10. Line 10, I think we will accept that. Skip down to the next colored sections.
For line 10, did, with Christina's comments, does anyone want to change what we said, or are we okay with that?
Can you, I don't have it in front of me, can you remind me?
Yes. It says, Aliaska Resort seeks to further develop along Chair 7. The trail plan denotes the use and interconnectivity to the Winter Creek Trail. This trail's view shed has been impacted significantly by the Nordic Spa, new parking lot, and lack of reclamation from the 5K. And the move from the hand tram to a bridge. So the footprint would increase if they're saying, if she's saying that they have alternative plans for Chair 7. And just maintaining the integrity of this trail.
So.
I don't know.
The, the Chair 7 parcel could potentially, the, the area immediately around Chair 7 is owned by Aliaska. It's the, it's the, I believe, it's the section behind that. So my, my recollection, is that, is that correct? Kyle, perhaps you can clarify.
I think we, I think we could simply say GBOS supports maintaining the integrity of the Winter Creek Trail through any development. It's just really simple, and we do. And we don't have to point fingers, and even if it is their land, you know, it's a simple way to honor Christina's comments, and I think we collectively are supportive of maintaining the integrity of all trails, so.
Right, so it's the Winter Creek Extension.
Yeah, the Winter Creek Extension, so, yeah, I think we could say GBOS, you know, supports maintaining the integrity of the trail, Winter Creek Trail.
Yep, so the, just so we know, each side of the Winter Creek Trail is already owned by, one is owned by Aliaska Resort on the uphill side, the lower side is owned by another owner. So the parcel that we're talking about here is separated from the trail.
That's what I was thinking, it was separate from Winter Creek, but she's talking about access to Winter Creek, where I was imagining at the tram base, but it's still fine to say what we're saying. And that the integrity of the Hemlock Forest or, or access to the famous Winter Creek Trail.
Okay, could you?
I think this is, I'm sorry to jump in, I think this is a spot where we can recognize the, the integrity of the trail easements and, and trail alignment. And I think that making a reference to the current easement on the trail would be something to add to the comment.
Okay, could I suggest a slight change to the wording, so GBOS supports valuation of this parcel for disposal while maintaining the integrity of the trail easement, et cetera? Or by emphasizes maintaining integrity?
You want to add valuation and disposal?
Yes. Valuation, dispose of the parcel. And then add the thing about the, and then have the integrity following that.
And I would simply say maintaining the integrity of the trail and its easements.
Thank you.
How's that?
That's great, thank you. Okay.
Quick clerical on that, it's parcel 6-014, I think, not 104.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, 11. No objection? Okay, 12, any objection? 6072. You have a variety of comments here, I'll let, I'll let people speak to this.
You mean 76?
Yeah, 6076 aligns 13 to 17. How do we want to combine these? I'm put, I'm going to, I'm going to pick somebody in the, in the class if nobody wants to speak up.
I, you know, I, I would say that they're, that the sheer volume of comments speaks more, speaks better than trying to combine them into, into one comment.
And for some input here, this one's a little tricky, is that we're right now in the Gerwood Parks Plan, and we are representing this area as a option for, for the art center, which the Gerwood Land Trust would be, probably sound like they would be coordinating and managing. We have not seen the full feedback from the community on that, so I think at this point in time, there is tentative of support for it, but it's really dependent on the outcome of the Gerwood Trails Plan, if, if the community does truly support it.
So we need to add something about the Parks Master Plan.
Which I think is in Jennifer's comment.
Yeah, yes, that's right, she said that.
Yeah, so I think the, yeah, I think something, something very close to what Kyle said about the GBOS, you know, we want the, the Parks Master Plan should be completed. Actually, we could just take, start with that Goodwood Parks Plan document. It needs to be completed and assembly approval to support this, well, the assembly approval for the disposal land is kind of axiomatic, but the, I think our, you know, we need, we need the Parks Plan process to complete. And we, we think this parcel will be one of the recommendations coming out of the Parks Plan. And then we can acknowledge the interest from Gerwood Land Trust, but I think it's premature to say we support the the lease or disposal or sale or anything else until we've seen the Parks Plan and, and know what the specific both requests are from the community and, and proposals.
So we should be able to strike Crystal's comment on that, since as she says, she's already submitted comments about that, and.
Yeah.
Right, I would agree with what you just said.
I think what we'll do through a mechanical process, if we start with, if we take line 17 and make that the comment, and then we'll pull the other bits in as needed.
And then assume, we already know, yes, Crystal sent her comments, Amanda Tuttle's comments will be sent, anyone else's comments sent.
Yep.
We could cite the comp plan at the end of it, too.
Yeah. Yeah, and then if we want to, just at the, to go to comprehensive plan as well, which, you know, I think as is discussed elsewhere, sort of overrides some of the aspects of the South Downs side plan. So maybe we just keep, maybe we keep line 13 and 17. And then I'm, I'm not sure about line 14, because I think that's, that's a little preemptive.
I'm fine with that. It's a, yeah, it's jumping ahead.
Are you happy with this language?
Did, I think Jennifer may have been addressing that, Jennifer, go ahead.
No, sorry, let's, let's address, let me hear Margaret's question first.
Okay.
She was asking if you like the statement she's typed.
Are we happy with line 17? I think that's a, I think that's a solid summary. Okay, Jennifer, did you have something to add on this?
Yes, I did have something, just, I just wanted to kind of ask the board if we want to, if we have any opinion about line 16. I know that Amanda is submitting that, I don't know if we want to reinforce that or back that up, or let her statement stand on its own, so I just wanted to ask the board about it.
I'll give some input on that, I think this, that, that line that Jennifer just brought up comes up again towards the end. And I felt the board discussed it there on something else, but it appears again in one of the comments at the end of the document.
What if we said something about GBOS shares community concerns about a land use study being done before disposal of property?
I, I like that, Jennifer. Because isn't this comment kind of covering Title 25 and some of the, you know, we have never really, as a board, decided how much we support some of these comments referring to Title 25 and the legal opinions that have come from the municipality regarding that.
I think it's a really good point, and I think we should use language that's a lot stronger than support. Because if it's Title 25, it's really clear that it requires a land use study, and that was one of the issues with Holden Hills is they just bypassed it. So I think we should say that GBOS requires, or something else that's got teeth in it. Because supports, I mean, we get bulldozed over with supports, like, they don't even blink twice on us.
I mean, we're going to get, in practice, we've got, it doesn't matter what we say here in practice, but I mean, we're still going through the exercise. You know, what word we use doesn't ultimately matter. The, so my concern about this.
Be even stronger, if they're not going to read it anyways, then.
In that case.
We should go required.
Demands.
Urges.
Threatens.
I'm good with demand, I like demand.
So there's a, there's something else I want people to think about here as well. So what, there is, Title 25 is clear, there needs to be a land use study. What a land use study is, and what fulfills that, is the bit that's, the bit that keeps on causing complexities. So, you know, I think it's, it's an absolutely solid argument that a plan that's developed 20 odd years ago and no longer relates to what the project actually is, is not an example of a land use study. But, you know, how much, I don't know how far the Parks Plan is going to go into it, but there'll be aspects of land use analysis in the Park. But um, you know, how much, I don't know how far the Parks Plan is going to go into it, but there'll be aspects of land use analysis in the Parks Plan. If we want something to go ahead, do we want to require HLB to do a bunch of work which they may decide not to fund or put off for five years before we can do something? While HLB is in the driving seat and can decide, effectively decide and control how land is used, is it a good idea to put a potential roadblock in our way? Now, I think there's a balance here, but um, while there are times where we can use the lack of a land use study to block things we don't want, there's times where HLB can use the lack of a land use study to block something, the things we do want. So I think we have to be careful about this. And I'm assuming, you know, we're not always gonna have a, as we've seen in the past, we're not always going to have an administration that uh, that is in favor of the Gerwood community or does things to benefit it. We may be in a position where we have administrations which, you know, want to delay and make things more difficult. I'm afraid I couldn't hear you, Kelly. Could you repeat that? We may have lost Kelly.
With the point just made by Mike, that would be a, a hurdle for the master Parks Plan. So, and there's.
Or perhaps a hurdle for what follows it. If we, so, there's just a balance here, and I, I don't know, I, I don't know what the right thing is. But uh, we should be careful about putting roadblocks in our own way as well. Because if, for example, if the um, if the Parks Plan is, if we want something to move forward and there is a case to be made that the Parks Plan is enough of a land use study, I, it probably won't be, but if it was, then we don't want to require something else that we can't fund. Kelly's returning. Hi Kelly, welcome back.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um.
We couldn't hear what you said, so if you could repeat it, please.
Yeah.
Could you repeat your last comment? Thanks.
Yeah, I was just saying that your point was extremely well made, and I, I agree with you that we need to be careful. I think it's helpful that for the stuff we care about most, we can point to the Parks Plan as a legitimate land, modern land use study. But generally speaking, I think land use studies are good for all seasons and, man, I'd rather hold up our things if it prevented another bulldozing like Holton Hills, you know, so I, I'm comfortable saying it's required, especially knowing that the Parks Plan is a legit one and it treats a lot of the land that we care about most.
Um, I made an assumption, sorry.
Question. I'm, I'm, don't mean to barge in. Um, I'm wondering if this comment is something that belongs in like the introductory paragraphs to this comment or to the comments overall.
Did, I, I, I was about to go the same way. I think this is a, I think this is a general comment on the document and the process. We could repeat it. We could also repeat it in individual parcels where we think there's a, there's a burning need for a land use study, but I, I, I agree that I think this is something we should say at the beginning of the letter.
That sounds great. It encompasses the whole valley that way, hopefully.
That sounds good to me, too.
Okay. So what I'm, how we'll try and do this is we'll go through if there's anything like this that we think we need to go back to. We'll reserve time to do that, but I, I'd like to keep going. Okay.
Wondering if we're adding this last bit that I have. Do we want to say GBOs supports that a land use study is completed prior to disposal relative to this.
My personal feeling is no.
I, I recommend we put this on hold because we'll get down to plans, studies and surveys. And at that point, we have another discussion there about uh, land use studies. So this might be a good spot to drop that one.
Okay. So yeah, so maybe that's where we put in rather than the beginning. Okay.
So remove this.
Yeah, remove that, keep it as it is, and then we may, when we do studies, we may go back and add comments to a particular cases. Okay. Eighteen to twenty. Comments on uh, one, three, four.
I'll give an update on it.
Thank you.
We talked with HLB this week about that as part of our initial, uh, we gave them an initial briefing on the Trails Plan, uh, that we're gonna present to the Advisory Committee tonight. And um, one thing they told me was that they did receive the resolution, uh, but they re, need for me to make the request as a department head, uh, as um, it does show that GBOs supports it, but the department needs actually request this land transfer. So I have submitted that transfer request. And they have acknowledged receiving it, so we'll see where it goes.
Did they actually refer to you as department head, Kyle?
Because that's. Well, department person.
Well, that's interesting. That's interesting because that's been the blockage for why we can't manage land, doesn't it? We'll look, we'll talk about that later. Okay, so mine was just a question which I think Kyle has answered.
So Mike, are you comfortable with, with uh, removing line eighteen then or not including that?
Yeah, that was it. That was a que, that was a question for us. I, I just didn't want to, I want a clarification on that.
And then I would like to address.
There's no requirement, there's no deal, there's no requirement to have the Parks Plan finished first, which I'm comfortable with. Sorry, Jennifer, go ahead.
No, no, that's okay. Um, actually, I would be comfortable with just keeping nineteen because I think nineteen incorporates twenty as well. We're encouraging transfer. We're not mentioning the South Townsite Plan.
Yes. Yeah, I would agree. So keep nineteen, not twenty. Any disagreement with that?
No disagreement.
You definitely get into South Townsite Plan discussion later on, too.
Right. Twenty-one. Doesn't sound like there's any complaints, so we'll keep that. Uh, twenty-two and twenty-three. Rihanna, do you have your proposed comment?
There it is.
That's the one.
I looked at everything and I didn't have my comment, even though I said I would.
So um, I think the.
And I did look, if this has to do with utilities, was this the one about? No, never mind, never mind.
Could we, could we go, could we actually look at the document and just read that language again because I need to be reminded?
Well, and I did look back at twenty twenty-five, since that was brought up earlier, there was no mention of the levy that I could find.
Okay.
In twenty twenty-five work plan, and this exact statement, utility easements generally is in last year's plan also, the exact statement. And we like, I think the board on Friday liked Brian's suggestion of will coordinator instead of may. Instead to like be stronger language. Instead, instead of after residents being or, it would be and.
I see. Do we wanna, so do we want to request that it's changed to HLB shall and an and rather than an or?
Yes.
Okay.
I support it. It's super vague, but it's still a little bit different than last year's. Tiny.
A question on utility easements. Has, has HLB ever even recognized that, that the levies and flood control are utility easements? Or are we assuming that um, they recognize them as utility easements?
I give some input on that. I've never heard infrastructure referred to as utility easements.
Yes.
And um, and so that, that gets, confuses me when we say that.
Yeah.
It, it's more infrastructure and uh, and so, no, I have not heard HLB refer to it that way.
I mean, they've actually been rather active in their, um, in their, their silence on the, on the issue. They want to be, they're being very um, very, I don't know if the word's coy, but they're, they're actively trying to not be associated with these structures in any way, shape or form.
Right, because infrastructure is expensive.
Yeah, and I mean, do they even, and that's, you know, how do they recognize these? And so I, this is not the um, this, this, um, this little utility easements generally is not the place to discuss this, but I, I suppose this is a future discussion, but they, they, they have actively not recognized the, the levies and flood control as, as utilities or pretty much anything.
Yes, I think they've acknowledged that they have ownership of the land, but nothing beyond that.
Yeah.
And you know, if, if there isn't a utility, there isn't a, an existing utility that's taken responsibility for those, for that infrastructure.
Nope.
And I don't think in general, I agree with Kyle, I don't think in general, um, you ever heard utilities being, you know, waterways not describes utilities, drainage is not describes a utility because it's part of a municipality function. Utility tends to be either private companies or um, you know, municipally associated um, entities like AWU that provide, you know, gas, electric, water, sewer. Telecoms, I guess.
Yeah.
Anyway, not, I don't think it is waterways. Is there any, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think this is the place for the waterways, um, for that discussion, but I think we need to have it somewhere. So we'd be saying no to twenty-three then. Okay. Well, right, let's go, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that goes in the, in the beginning somewhere.
Right. We need to address it somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it's a point to be made, but I don't know that it goes specifically on, on this page, and maybe it can be part of a um, a, a statement early on in the, um, in our responses.
Right. Or potentially it ties in with plans if we're, if we're, they are, they're agreeing on a, on a watershed plan. In which case, that might be an area where we address this, particularly the water infrastructure. Okay. Let's move on to uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-four to twenty-six, sorry, eleven A.
So I have a edit recommendation for uh, line twenty-four, which I wonder if you would be comfortable with saying, please clarify progress towards the lot disposals listed in AO twenty twenty-three dash one, three, seven.
Yeah, that, that's the essence of what I was trying to say. That's better language.
Okay.
To nearest data, please.
Sure. Please clarify progress towards the lot disposals specified in AO blah, blah, blah.
And then it's semantics.
It's semantics, but I think we should say like not please request or GB, G boss requests or requires, you know, something where we're just like not being nice. We're like, you know, showing that we matter and we require this and I don't know. I, I think we should start using stronger language. I think Brian, Brian's my spirit animal on just freaking full send.
So I don't know if you can see the text that I've replaced on the, on the screen.
Yep. TV us.
Oh, I was uh, I had recommended cutting everything afterwards, the whole, um, everything that in quotes.
Yeah, I don't think we need, agreed. I don't think we need that, no. Agreed, Jennifer.
They, they'll just understand what we mean.
Well.
Well, we, we's talking about lot disposals.
Yeah.
Um, or, or lot disposals for Gerwood Housing. How about that? So HLB clarify progress towards lot disposals for Gerwood Housing specified in AO twenty twenty-three.
So after the word disposals is what?
Yeah, so I, so what I'm suggesting is we, it would be HLB, request HLB clarify progress towards lot disposals for Gerwood Community Housing specified in AO twenty twenty-three, one, three. Thank you.
And then I would recommend, or one possibility for uh, instead of that period, put a comma and say um, and reiterate the request for those lots to come from phase one.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer.
And then we can delete or, or, or skip line twenty-five and line, I think that incorporates line twenty-six as well.
Yeah. So I just want to say something behind the, the clarification thing. So what the ordinance actually says is that one multifamily for at least eight units, and then that's why I quoted it, and then um, a single family or multifamily. And all I've heard recently is it's going to be an eight unit, a multifamily of a unit and a single family. I don't know why that decision was made, where the decision was made. You know, why aren't we getting two multifamily units? Um, I want to understand what they're doing, why they've done that. Or whether that's still open, it's just, it's just, that's the phrase that's being used as a shorthand. But we haven't got clarity on what decisions have been made. And I agree, we absolutely want to push for phase one. Okay, any other comments on that section? Move to, that case, move to line twenty-seven and after. Okay, discussion on this set.
How about we keep line twenty-seven?
I'm fine with that.
And do we want to incorporate, Brianna, do you want to incorporate your next line into that or what do you think?
Oh, well, because that one was so lengthy, um, we don't have to say, maybe without saying it means we support it. Or if we say we support some part of it, we, that might infer we support all of that narrative, but um, oh, like yours, yours, Jennifer says, does not support this. Those are must be comments I just said out loud. Um, so I.
So I'm wondering if, I'm, sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
Well, I'm wondering if we can just get rid of twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Because that way we're not, we're not actively supporting the disposal, I don't think, in line twenty-seven.
I agree. That wasn't the intent. It was to just acknowledge that um, acknowledge that there they will not dispose. And then I think there are, I, there are items of thirty we need to incorporate.
So just one question, do we want to, uh, from Brianna's comment on, in line uh, twenty-eight, do we want to add a reiteration about the Gerwood Trails Plan and Comp Plan, or are we comfortable with the ways we've reiterated, or the places we've reiterated that already?
That's all, I, that's also incorporated, I think, in thirty, so I, yeah, I think we should, we should have something about the Trails Plan, but I think thirty is, actually, Brian, when you talk to, does, do you think twenty-seven incorporates what you were getting at in thirty or should we change it?
So twenty-seven.
I think we should reiterate the Trails Plan.
I agree.
I think we should reiterate the Trails Plan. I also just noticed something about how they talk about um, there's a, a passage here that goes first comma in twenty seventeen, H L B A C pass, blah, blah, blah. We, we are, we have been proposing the development of. We, we are, we have been proposing the development of, um, multi-season, multi-use trails as opposed to Nordic ski trails. And, and I, I think we might want to call that out, but, um, that's about all I've got there. Again, I don't, I don't think we need to, um, rehash old history and need to be looking forward in our comments.
Okay. I'll make a concrete suggestion then. So, uh, 27, we should add, um, at the end after we should continue the sentence. So until all trail easements are recorded, um, and then period. Any, any disposal should be, or sorry, any, um, work needs to be consistent with Goodwood Trails Plan and other relevant plans.
Yep. Go to trails plan and other relevant plans. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So that'd be it. Uh, yes, local plans. Thank you. Yes. Um, so 30 and 31 and those 32 to 34. 11C. Trying to remember what this was. This is the area, this is the G I P, um, there it's own G I P, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, it's the one that was added, I think, when the tract was.
Yeah.
Added. It's the one that Crystal is interested in seeing, um, AWU look at for the other well.
Right. I, I think, I, this is one where I think the, uh, I would agree with Brian. This seems like a five-year thing. There's nothing concrete in the, in the short term. So if we, if we change line nine, uh, sorry, line, uh, 34 to say something like, you know, G B S supports the concept, but move it to the five-year plan since there's a.
How about G, G B O S supports and recommends?
Yes, and recommends, supports the concept and recommends moving it to the five-year plan.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I would take out that since there's no urgency, I'd just say recommend moving to the five-year plan. Okay.
So wait, just real quick. So we are going to say no on lines, just to clarify, we say no on lines 32 and 33, and then yes on line 34.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. Next section. 639.
Work a mountain view.
Right. Okay.
I like saying that we are in agreement with plating, well, the work and plating the parcel. And then in state some kind of intention of community-led development next, benefiting the community. Kind of summarizing the next few lines.
I like combining, we could combine line five and line 38.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So, so yeah, if we added to, um, if we take lines 35 and 38 and then link them together by having something like, so keep the first, keep the sentence from 35 and then 38, we can put something like, um, G B S support plan submission and, um, state, state the intent for community land development and workforce housing in this description. Disposed to Goodwood nonprofit. Or potential disposal of Goodwood nonprofit.
Should, is this a place where we could also express, um, that we do not want to see this land, um, sold to a private developer? You know, and get a little more specific and, and not only just saying, you know, community-led development, but specifically not to a private developer.
I agree with that.
And one question about that though, like if we have, I, I think the interest is having it be, um, I'm curious if that would preclude our community than using a private developer. So in other words, I think the consideration, I don't know that we're opposed to private developers in general. We just don't want it to be an entirely profit-based development.
It's disposal to a developer. And so the way that Brian titled it, it, it achieves what you're saying.
Thanks.
And we could always follow the H L B lead and just go back on our words from time to time. I said that out.
At least I haven't made a cynical.
You may have said it out loud, but we were all thinking it, Brian.
Okay. Well, it's, it's now public record.
Okay. Help me out with language here. Request from G B O S include language committing to disposal of the parcel for community-led development and workforce housing.
Yes. Um, through potential disposal to disposal to Goodwood nonprofit. So, um, the pur- purpose theory is honestly, if a private, if a private developer wants to come along and say, we're gonna, we're gonna produce, you know, more than 50% um, community housing that's occupied and attainable. Um, and they're not going to make any money in it, or they have some benefactor, or they're doing this gift to the community. That's great. I don't think it matters whether it's a for-profit or a not-for-profit. What's important is that the, the focus and the majority of housing is community housing. Yep.
But then?
Yes.
And then do, where are we with 36? Are we good?
Yeah, I think we can drop the others.
Do we need to cite our resolution or no? That's past, right? Well, it's future.
Can I, and I'm sorry, I also need a reminder on why I would have said remove the last sentence from the current description. Sorry. And I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately.
The last sentence was options for eventual disposal of the residentially zone tract have not been determined yet, but may include public-private partnerships, competitive RFP or other methods compliant with code. So I would just remind you that, like, they have to operate according to code.
Yeah.
Right.
And we're saying, we're saying we have a, we have a, we want them to commit to something where it emphasizes community benefit.
Okay, sounds good. Thank.
So I think, I think we did say that.
Something in here about local benefit, because community can be all of Anchorage.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's effectively a restatement of line 37. I wouldn't say instead of public benefit, but I think the, um, see.
Local benefit? Is that what you're thinking?
To achieve local benefit. That's great. Yeah, that's good. That's vague but specific.
Good.
If there is such a thing.
Right.
Tiny and huge simultaneously. Okay. Um, line 40. Yep, that's just a updater. Any objections?
Let's leave it.
Yep. So, yes, the 40, 41. Yes, I agree. There should be reference to the C W P P, although we're going to be talking about that in a bit and there are some concerns there.
Let's keep it though.
Yes. Right. Now we're in planned studies and surveys.
Not land management?
I think we've just said yes to land management.
Oh, yep, okay.
We said yes to 41, to 42, 43, 44.
Got it.
So did we have a, Jennifer, did we have a draft for a comment here?
No, we do not. But I wonder if we could just simplify, or I wonder how we feel about including primarily line 42 and just saying, uh, as that we believe land use study should be conducted before land disposals.
So, um.
It makes me wonder why it's totally opposite of what Crystal's statement is written here.
Well, I think Crystal's coming from a similar concern to me. Um, I think she, I think the, actually, I need to get power, I need to power up my laptop because it's about to die. Um, I think Chris, Crystal has the same concern, or I, I, from what I heard, I think we haven't spoken about it. But from what I heard, I think she has a similar concern to me of what we don't want to do is give, is basically create a bottleneck that affects us as well, because while I feel that at the moment we have a fairly, um, good relationship with H L B, um, given this history, um, that will not always be the case. And they may, you know, they can, they are in a position where they can just block anything we want to do locally. So we don't want to give more ammunition. We don't want to give a future iteration of H L B more ammunition. So that's why I think we have to be a little bit careful about this. So to me, the step which I think has been missing is a clear justification, is a clear explanation of how that has been met in any disposal. They haven't typically said that. So at least we'd need, at least we want an explanation of how, what land you study applies to this disposal and why it's relevant today. You know, if it's from 20 years ago and it's been contradicted by more recent plans, then it, it might be adopted, but it's not a conformant plan. So for any, basically for any disposal of land, we would want, there should be a clear, a clear statement of what land you studies apply and an expla- and a justification of why they are, why they are a conformant, relevant plan to current, to current reality, I guess, to current situation. I can't think of better wording. I'm just going to step away for about 30 seconds while I deal with my power supply.
I have a clerical edit on this, I think, although it looks like it's still being typed.
Yeah, I'm a little bit lost. So I think that Mike said something about for any disposal, G B O S requests an explanation of what land use study is.
What land you study is required. Or I wonder, yeah. And then I would say, and why they are, or why it is currently relevant rather than relevant today.
Right, I'm back. I did hear that discussion. Yeah, I think Jennifer's got the same, uh, Jennifer, uh, better repeated by I was trying to say. So what we want to make sure is that any, yes, we think there should be land use studies, but specifically we want to make sure that there, it's explicitly mentioned in any disposal action. And what we don't want to do is pointing, pointing to something from 20 years ago that's, uh, not relevant or has been superseded or is technically adopted, but, um, you know, doesn't, doesn't match the realities of today's situation or the current situation.
So Mike, if we add the word, um, why it is considered after, um, considered, if we add the word currently between.
Yeah, currently it's good.
And relevant. Then.
Yeah.
Does that, then does that suit what you're saying?
Yeah, I'd say rather than why and, and justify, and justify why land use study and a justification of why the land use study cited is considered currently relevant.
That sounds good.
So. Go ahead and. Yeah, thank you.
So that makes it a yes on that line and then a no on the previous line.
Right. Okay. I think that also clears up the, hopefully clears up the discussion we had prior on land use studies. So further back in the document. Okay. Right. Line 45 and 46.
We're getting rid of 42. I'm sorry. I was.
Correct.
We're to 42. You're happy with the language on 43 now?
Yes.
44 was a no, and we can get rid of.
Yeah, we can get rid of that. I started out that one, the other one.
This one.
Yep. Okay, looks like we're getting closer to the end. Um, 45, 46.
Two minutes, drag it over.
Yeah, this is quite a long section, isn't it? It talks about the history. So my comment is particularly about paragraph three. I appreciate that they have included that. They're not committing to anything, of course. But they at least have it in the document.
Right. Well, they are semi-committing to saying they're going to give those condition ideas to H L B A C and the assembly when
Yes.
they decide on disposal. So I like that statement. I think one other thing on that one. Oh, geez. Oh, that we just said in, by verbally was that it seems like it's a pre. Um, like it's already decided. Kind of what Brian.
A foregone conclusion, is that what you mean?
Yeah, thank you. I lost the word I wrote.
Yeah, I'll ask Jennifer again. Do you, did you have any words missing ready?
No, but looking at this now, I, I wonder how we feel about just adding, uh, a sentence within comment number 45 that, uh, we note that our community has strong we note that our community has strong concerns about the development of this area.
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest as well, I think we need to note that we still have very strong concerns about the development and um, and urge a close collaboration.
Oh, I like that.
I like all of it, and when Margaret's done, I would suggest changing notes to emphasizes.
Yes. That's better word.
I like that, too.
Okay, so that'd be yes to forty five, note forty six. With seventy four, eighty nine.
We use uh. Jennifer's, well, forty seven, and then if we want to add resolution noted after that sentence, we could. Just basically saying we've already. Exemplified these in our resolutions. Extrapolated on them.
Yeah, I think we could put the resolution number in there, but I think it's, I think it works okay without. I'd be comfortable with just keeping forty seven.
Just clerically, I think it worked, or just flow wise, I think it works better if we encourage close communication with G B O S and businesses in the area, if we just switch those two.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Well, I'd say businesses and residents.
That sounds good, too.
So G B O S residents and businesses, you know. And then we can drop forty eight, forty nine.
Do you want to note that the, I think the issue for G B O S and the community has to do with the current proposal, I don't think that there is disagreement that something should happen at the intersection there.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what we're saying, the currently proposed highway change.
Currently proposed highway interchange, right?
Change, yeah.
Or Margaret, are you saying you think somebody else needs clarification there?
Well, I had added currently, I just wanted to make sure, I mean.
I think that, as it, as it reads, I think that's what we, I think that's the sense of the body. It's about the current proposal. I know that Mark is on from D O T as well, so we're.
I can let you know that uh, the project's been indefinitely paused right now.
Right, thank you.
At environmental, so.
Right.
I have no timeline for you.
Yeah, I think the last time I saw in the SWIP, it was pushed out to beyond the end of the um, the SWIP period, so it was like no earlier than thirty two or something.
Yeah, something like that.
Since Mark is on, I didn't noted that earlier, and thank you for that, can I just check with both you and the board then on, are we comfortable with saying no to comment number forty eight, and do we even know if the coastal management plan applies?
Or is it just NEPA right now?
Is this for the interchange still?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a great question, I think NEPA's been complete or is near complete for it, but I don't. I would assume we'd have to comply with the coastal management plan if it, if it comes into effect, but, but that's part of the NEPA process, so. So are you, are you asking if your comment? I think the comment's fine.
Yeah, I think we're asking if that.
We're asking if we should particularly draw attention, is that, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead, you said it.
Okay, I think we're asking if we should specifically mention the coastal management plan, or if it is truly included within NEPA, and so therefore that's just being redundant.
Um, I, I want to say it is included, I don't, I'm not a NEPA expert, and I don't know what's been done through the whole NEPA document for, for the project, so I think your, I think your comment's fine, I think you can draw attention to it, don't let me influence you, you guys, I mean, you're your own entity, so if you feel that you need to, you want, you want to mention it, and uh, I think that's fair and reasonable.
I think we were just asking for, for clarification if you had the information.
I don't, not, not, not.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, so are we comfortable with the, with forty eight as well? To get a sense of the body. Anyone object? Okay, so we'll say yes to forty eight as well. Okay. We have some individual lines, fifty. Can you remind me what that was?
For industrial park.
Oh, yep, okay. Yep.
Do you want to see it?
No, that's fine, I know what that is now. Okay, so yes to fifty, fifty one.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, it's one of these things that gets repeated time after time, and there's never any, never any information about, has anything happened, has it not happened, is the timescale shortened, it's just every five years, you see the same language repeated in there, nothing seems to happen. So at least what, what is going on?
I'll speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, thank you.
Because I brought that up, and I think these are the parcels that the five K is in, is this correct? On the right one here. Trying to see where I am, page twenty three.
Are we on G I P? Oh, no, two, five, one, and it's five K and then Upper Valley.
Correct, so um, part of our talk with them about this, and uh, you know, is looking at it as potential parkland up there, and um, they were pretty, I remember we met with H L B and they said that it probably won't be possible because the conveyance still hasn't happened yet between the state and uh, H L B, and for that conveyance to happen, all those parcels need to be surveyed, and it didn't sound like H L B had the appetite to do that survey, so. So anyways, I, we, we're going to note that within the plan, and uh, and we've asked them to give us idea on some sort of rough cost as to what it would take to get those areas surveyed so the conveyance can continue, or completed. And, excuse me, and move forward, so anyways, that's where we're at now.
So the document said, the document was addressing a slightly different point within that. That it, in the, in the plan, it seems to be saying that H L B hasn't received a patent, but the state says that they've issued a decision, and that's good enough as a patent. But I know H L B in the past has said because it's the lack of patent which is delaying any conveyancing. So um, it sort of implies that there's a roadblock there and nobody's addressing it. If there, if it isn't a roadblock, and if the, if conveyancing is just about survey costs, then it should say so. So I think there is a, there is a confusion about whether it's not clear whether H L B is accepting the argument that the state has done what it needs to do. And again, the language hasn't changed in, you know, probably a decade or two.
Correct.
So if it is just, if the only thing holding up trans, uh, conveyancing is survey, then it's just a funding issue.
That's kind of the gist I got, but.
Right, but that isn't what it says.
Yep.
What it says is different, so I think the, I think that's the thing we need to, we need to push on. Of maybe, you know, can they clarify what the, what the actual, what the actual current status is, and whether, whether it's just, whether it's just a survey and funding for survey that's required, or whether there is still disagreement about the you know, the, the state of the, whether a patent is required, or I don't know the way I would phrase this, but this is the essence of it. So maybe we just want, we just want more information and clarification, and we can talk about it at a, at the H L B A C meeting.
That statement looks good.
Yeah, the, it's the conveyance of the land, and my question would be about is H L B, does H L B accept that the decision letters are, are inadequate? And then maybe we could just say, is the, is the blockage in conveyance due to the lack of survey and funding for surveys? Thank you, that's great. Okay, are we comfortable with fifty one?
Yes, I look forward to their answer.
Yep. Okay, fifty two, again, can you remind me what this?
Those are both cemeteries, Eagle River is, I think it's one dash one, one, one.
Yes.
It's not a six, because it's Eagle River. Yes, it's, it's one dash one, one, one.
Yes, again, this is a, the funding question, isn't it, there's no capital funding.
And they both say they're going to work with the planning department.
Okay, so yes to this. Maybe we should just G B O S continues to support these projects.
I like that.
Or reiterates our support for these projects. Okay, fifty three.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? But so fifty three is yes, fifty four, fifty five. Should we just say yes to fifty four?
Yes, and then that was another one Christina had a comment on.
Right.
And she was stating that our G V S A invested in upgrading culverts, and H L B needs to be more than just a stakeholder for a watershed management plan, I think that statement is because H L B's maybe admitted to being a stakeholder, right?
Right.
And then they should be more than that. Maybe leading the effort. Funding. The, that's kind of what she's saying.
I kind of think that that comment and number fifty five are incorporated in fifty four.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think we're comfortable with fifty four, just keep it fifty four. Okay, so we say fifty five, fifty four, yes, fifty five, no, let's move to the next section, go to South Townsite Master Plan.
Should we comment?
I don't, I don't know if we need this. Yeah. I know why this discussion came up, but I don't know if we need it, what do you guys think?
I think we probably do, because they're suggesting it should, it may be a priority, and we can probably partly clarify that, because I don't, I mean, the state, the statements in here are mostly correct, I think mostly pointing in the right direction, the comprehensive plan overrides, overrides the South Townsite Master Plan, if anything is, if anything in the South Townsite Master Plan is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, then that part of the South Townsite man is no longer compliant. So there's a, you know, it can be overridden, there may be bits in there which are right, but a lot of it isn't, so we could replace it, we could de-adopt it. Or we can just take the bit, you know, do it on a case by case basis, and they say these things are consistent, these things are not consistent, and just the bits that are consistent can get used. There's not, my understanding for planning is you're not required to, when you do a new comprehensive plan, you're not required to go through and update every other plan. If there are inconsistencies, you can just take, you can effectively merge the two and take the comprehensive plan as priority, and then anything from the old plan which is consistent with that. But you can then ignore things which are inconsistent.
Isn't that contained within the lower part where it says the Gerda Camp Plan is the governing, governing document, is it not?
It is.
Specifically say override, so I would, I would, I would possibly, we just get rid of all the questions. Anything with a question mark at the end of it can go, does that sound good?
Yeah, which I think is everything except for the last sentence, isn't it?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just going to add, all they said last year was, for this exact statement, was potential update after the G C P is adopted.
Right. So I think the.
I like that.
Yeah, I mean, maybe here, it's the um, it's that we don't, I don't think this should be a priority over various other things, but if it's a requirement, I guess we will have to do it. But um, I think we, the, the comprehensive plan obviously relates to this, the park plan potentially relates to this. And the park plan isn't finished. So maybe we can just say any update, any update to the Go to South Townsite Plan should also be, Townsite should also be consistent with a future that are yet to be adopted, Parks Plan. Because we are considering that area, aren't we? Well, we are considering the, the South Townsite in general. So that's kind of a way to punt it somewhat.
I like that.
And then I did like Brian's comment about just reorder the plan so the comprehensive plan comes first.
So I think that makes line fifty six a yes, and then line fifty six a no, because it's included within fifty six.
Yeah, fifty six, yes, fifty seven, yeah, fifty six, yes, fifty seven, no. Fifty eight, I would say yes as well. And I think fifty nine is saying you must do this work, and we're sort of saying maybe not, definitely not yet.
So let's say no to fifty.
So no to fifty nine. Yep. Okay, everyone comfortable with that?
Say, actually, I, I wonder if we do want to um, to reinforce Amanda's number sixty, because I thought that that was, well, maybe we don't care, but I thought she had a good point.
I, I agree with her, I think the, I think more information on the fund would be really good, be kind of necessary.
So we're comfortable saying yes to sixty?
I definitely would recommend saying yes to sixty.
And maybe we should clarify that it's the H L B fund balance with five year projection.
Yes, that's it.
Yes.
Thank you, Kyle.
Okay. Oh, yeah, so it's uh, return the H L B on balance with five year projection. And it's just diagram, no S.
Yep.
I'd like to get props to Margaret, because her spelling is excellent, and she's doing on the fly in front of all of us, so you just won the spelling bee for today.
I, I did see one typo, which I, which the reason I say is I make this typo all the time, I think you've said. I think you've said community led with L E A D, and I've done that so many times. T L E D. Yeah.
She didn't, she didn't use any yours or you ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, great work, Margaret.
Thank you. The, we did, I think, have a couple of things we were going to revisit. So let's just do a quick, jump to the top, quick whiz down, make sure there's nothing we've got overdue. I'm sure I stated this in 2025. You, you, Brianna, you said you looked at this.
I did. I couldn't find, I only did one look over, but last year's plan did not mention the levy.
Okay, could I suggest that we change, we, we do make this same point, but we request that they, they sort of address everything that was listed in the 2025 plan with a status. So if it's not meant, you know, everything in the 2025 plan should be mentioned as a yes or no, rather than just say what they succeeded with. There should be a list, should be a reference to anything which was not completed.
But I do want to add, last year, I think it was last year, they did that really long presentation, not long, but in-depth presentation about the levy with history. So
Yes.
They've acknowledged that, but they didn't put it in the work plan.
Right.
It was a presentation they could put in 25's work plan or 24, but that's passed.
Yeah, that's great. Maybe it's actually, instead of list all actions, maybe summarize all actions from 2025. I think it'd be really helpful just to have a word.
I apologize, but I've just had something come up and I need to jump. I am sorry.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. So Jennifer will be leaving the meeting 11:24, sorry, 11:34. Okay, and then I think we can drop the bit about the, after the word mention onwards.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Oh, after mention.
The word, yeah, for the word mention onwards, delete that part. And then we still have a pending question about water, water and levies. Okay. So that would be a yes, and just for cleanup, three and four would be no's. So yes, for seven and three and four and no. Okay, if we can just sort of skim down the document, see if there's anything else we've been pending notes for.
So this is a no?
That's a no. Because we've incorporated in the line above, yeah.
Okay, and this is no?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just shifted techniques someplace.
Yep, okay, so this, this point is, I think, the one we still have outstanding. And we can do that on the waterways plan. Let's keep going down.
Again.
Right, so I think the only thing that we still, we still had was the waterways plan. And I think that, or the point about levies, and I think that ties in with the plan about waterways. I can't remember where that was. Well, the, the Gerwood Watershed.
So I think on page 25 of the document is where the Gerwood Valley Watershed Master Plan is listed.
Okay, so if we can go down this list then to, because we did make a comment on that supporting it. So if we go down this list to the comment we made on page 25. There we go. That'd be line 54. So I think there's an additional point in here that that the, the the management plan, or at least we, we want to, we want to get clarification on. Wow, it sort of, it sort of falls under the watershed plan, doesn't it? We want to get clarification on what H L Bs commit, we want to know what H L Bs commitment is to, to, you know, upgrades, development, maintenance, problem solving on the water, waterways infrastructure. But I think that's something that will come out of the plan. So maybe it's a, sorry, I'm, I'm thinking out loud. I'm going to suggest, I'm going to stress some language. So thank you for recognizing the need for a Gerwood Valley Watershed Management Plan. G B O, rest, G B O S requests that that plan includes responsibilities, includes identifying responsibilities for H L B and other government agencies for waterways infrastructure or for related infrastructure.
Government entities?
Yes.
Was after other?
H L B and other government entities. For waterways infrastructure. And then, and then we could do period, and then that last sentence about G B O S looks forward to working with H L B Secure Fund Funding. Okay, how is that?
Thank you, Mike, for working on the words there. Do we need to call out the levy specifically? I think with their presentation in 24 or 25,
Yes.
they
Yeah, I, I think actually I would say yes, so the waterway structure, comma, including levies. Thank you for that suggestion. Okay, are we comfortable with that?
Yep, I think just need a comma after waterways, right? And perfect, Margaret.
No, I don't, I think you, if anything, you need an apostrophe before the S for waterways because it's possessive, isn't it? Or no apostrophe after the S, isn't it? Because it's a plural possessive. Anyway, I'll leave that to, I'll leave that to the grammarians. Okay, so we've got a bunch of comments, we've got yeses and nos. So if we just, if we just, if we just list all the yeses, that would, that will effectively be our letter. I think we can take a, we can probably take the wording from last year. I think we had an introductory paragraph saying something like, thank you very much for the, you know, for the work that went into the plan. Here are G B O S's comments.
Yeah, I'll, I'll show you the letter from next year so everybody can see what's going to go out. So this is from last year, you can just see the letter here. So
Yeah.
It'll just be straightforward like that. And
Yeah, so can we just go to the very first, the very beginning of the letter? Just make sure we have.
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment on, obviously we'll update the dates. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the 2026 H L B Worth Program and Management Plan. We appreciate the draft document being published. Yeah, well, actually, time for adoption in very early, early 2026. And thank you for the active interest. Yep, that's it. Perfect. So basically update the dates. Yeah, we can use exactly the same language and then the table in there. So I would entertain a motion to accept this, accept this language and set of comments.
I move to accept all the language and the letter with updated dates and names.
Okay, and the comments, and the comments we just made.
And the comments we just made, sorry.
Thank you. And so if you could resecond that, Kelly.
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay.
Do, I do, but it's, I guess it's not really to this motion. It's just about the meeting tomorrow. Is anyone going to submit their, not a testimony, but needing to go to the meeting tomorrow?
Is tomorrow the actual, tomorrow isn't the meeting where they're accepting it? Yeah.
Thursday, if there's public comment or something like that.
Right, but tomorrow is not the meeting where there, where there's public hearing for the, the, the public hearing for the H L B work plan is in December, I believe.
Okay, never mind. Yeah.
Is that correct? Because I think they actually said they were going to open, keep comments open until the end of the week. So this, it would be premature to have the public hearing until after the comments have been processed.
I'll pull up the agenda right now so that we're all on the same page.
Thank you. If we could just confirm that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that Tim's, Tim's report to, to G boss said that there was nothing on the agenda this week concerning Gerwood.
Right, it's pretty light, as you can see here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I just saw that main page, Kyle. It does say 1218 is the hearing.
Yep, great. Okay. So any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Sure. Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Kelly Aknik?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Agington?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we have one more item on the agenda, which is the C W P P. Well, first of all, thank you, everyone, for all the work that went into this. And also thank you to the other, other members of the public who have contributed. We really appreciate that. I think we've ended up with a, a really good, a really good set of comprehensive comments. C W P P, Brianna, take this away.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being at the work session today still. And I, as fire supervisor, looked in and through the entire C W P P, which is an in-depth Community Wildfire Protection Plan completed by Bintel Inc. And it's a Colorado-based company that's done over 120 community wildfire protection plans. And their last one in Alaska was in the Denali Borough. So it's pretty lengthy. They have appendices that are very detailed. But they've divided the whole muni into suppression unit, suppression planned units. And Gerwood is one of those units. So we, like Kai said at our Monday meeting, if you wanted to already look, or hopefully you've already looked, you can just go to the appendices and go straight to our unit. So I took comments from Chief, Chief Weston and then comments basically from experience through our community process of the Trails Plan and the comprehensive plan and the reaction of Holton Hills to complete my letter. So if you've read it, I think that's great. If you haven't, there are just some concerns about only a couple of the tables. Because we are, we get, they acknowledge in the plan that we have four time, up to four times as much precipitation than the rest of the muni, including the Anchorage Bowl. So, and then I just reiterated Chief Weston's points. And I tried to make it narrative, but sort of similar to our, the way we responded to H L B plan. And the reason they're rushing through, I would say, you know, sort of rushing through this comment period is because there are grants they need to chase very, very soon. And the longer they wait for more comments, the more they won't be able to get these grants that are federally funded. So that's kind of unfortunate, but they've had all these other presentations through the summer, and it is kind of off the time of year to be thinking of fire wise. But that's just how their, their planning schedule is going. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
I, I definitely do. First of all, I'd just like to check, Kelly and Brian, have you read this document or at least skimmed it? Either the document or this, and or this letter? Just want to make sure that people are aware.
I have it.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Would it be, would it be possible to actually look?
Because, yeah, I know Mike has, and if you, like, for example, one of the parcels we just talked about was 6039, and in this plan, they point out 6039, and H L Bs already responded to the fire mitigation of this parcel. And something like that would be a comment. We probably have the wherewithal to make based on just the comprehensive plan. But Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, right. So actually, I'm going to ask staff, do you have? Sorry, I've lost my, lost my window. Do you have, can you actually get to that, the C W P P? It might be, I mean, I could potentially share if that was easier. So what I want to say is the, really reiterate the, the point that Brianna was making earlier. So the plan said, one of the big parts of the plan is it splits up the whole of the Anchorage municipality into these suppression units and then talks about each of them. And one of the things it does is assesses risks in each of the, each of the units. And it does that a couple of ways. It does that by describing, you know, special cases and special issues and things like that in each of the areas. But then also runs this, basically does an analysis of different data sources to predict risk. And the whole of the, and I, so I dived into this in some detail. And they used exactly the same climate information for every single part of the bowl. So they are treating Gerwood as if it has, you know, 12 to 14 inches of rain when we actually have 50. It's, it just is not a, it is not a, I would say it's actually sort of not a responsible way of, of doing this analysis. While there is a piece of text that acknowledges that Gerwood has a very, very different climate, it is not incorporated into any of the analysis. There are a couple of other technical issues as well about how the analysis is done. So and from that analysis is then a set of mitigation strategies. So actually, it's not some, actually, if you go to, I don't, I think it's on page 50. Can you go to page 50? Let's start with that. So one of the diagrams, this one on page 50 ish, there we go. So that shows all the different, all the different units the S P use across the municipality and that, that color code. This is not how likely a fire is, and not really a measure, direct measure of risk. This is just about the fuels. So what this shows is the highest risk, the, the densest forest and the forest that burns most is on the hillside, the sort of mid-hillside and Gerwood. And that is correct. That is what's happened. That is really the reality of the situation. But what this doesn't incorporate, this, this diagram is meant to incorporate. But I think if we go down, I think it's just after this. There we go. Slightly further down, there's another diagram. It shows the, it shows the categories. There we go. That's the one. So it puts us into the moderate or the high category, which is three out of five. Even though we have the biggest, the most flammable and the most dense fuel, this does incorporate some of the other aspects of Gerwood, which makes it less, but less likely, but does not incorporate the climate aspects of Gerwood. So this is probably still an overestimate of risk. And the reason this matters, we now have to go to, I think, appendix D. The reason it matters is based on this analysis, they then suggest a set of mitigations. And I think it's a different link from the, from the page you got to this from. The appendices are, there we go. If you go further down on the right, there's appendix D, which is the mitigation recommendations. So again, if we go through, I don't know what page it is, these are all done in S P U order and we're 20, so that's page, we're on page 35 ish, 33.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this document suggests specific mitigation, which includes large fire breaks along Crow Creek Road, along the edge of the Aliaska Basin subdivision and along Aliaska Highway. And that is, you know, and some, some changes in systems and water availability. So those fire breaks in particular are predicated and based on an analysis which does not take into account the probability of a fire here. It does not properly take into account at all. I think slightly further down, there's a, there's a map which shows where the fire break, the projected fire breaks are.
Yeah.
Is it up? There we go. So these are, I think they're called shaded fire breaks. So they're, I think, 200 feet wide or something. But you keep standing trees, but get rid of all the undergrowth and any, you know, some of the trees, you thin out, you don't remove everything. It's not clear cut, but it's close to clear cut. So the recommendations in this are to have a, basically a, a large swath of tree removal along the edge of Aliaska Basin, along the eastern edge of Aliaska Highway. along the edge of Aliaska Basin, along the eastern edge of Aliaska Highway and along majority of Crow Creek Road. And what's partly problematic about this is the comprehensive plan basically says exactly the opposite of, we want to maintain view shed and we don't want to do this kind of clearing. So we have a direct conflict. And that's why I think the, the fact the analysis doesn't, does not incorporate at all the different climate in Goodwood is a problem. Anyway, I've spoken a lot.
Thank you, Mike. So Kyle, if you go down just one more page, if Kelly or Brian can't open the appendix on their devices, this is the whole, the narrative of the Glacier Creek Road, they're calling it. And then Heritage Land Bank is the landowner and manager and the land trust for those parcels. And then the next one is Crow Creek Road and Aliaska Highway. And so they acknowledge the landowners and managers and then what kind of method they'd like to do to mitigate the fire danger. So then they, in their whole thing, there's definitions of the shaded fuel break and what that means. So I wrote responses to those, but then I'm open to edits, which I was on Monday also. But this is due pretty soon. And there is also a meeting tonight that I intend to go, if that's okay with the board, online.
Yeah, I think the comments are due by the thirtieth.
Yes.
Margaret, you have your hand up.
Yeah, it seems like another element that would be hard to capture in their pictures is access to help, you know, our fire department, of course, is out here by themselves with the equipment that they have. So I kind of feel like that might be used as a justification to bump up our level of concern about wildfires. So it seems like something that addresses climate makes more sense. But I think we should be careful in how we promise our capacity as far as firefighting.
Absolutely, we have to, I mean, the, the reality here is that the, the analysis, the bits of the analysis that are solid show that there, that there is a potential for a very, very major fire in Goodwood. That's absolutely true. But it overestimates the likelihood of that because it doesn't take into account the client, the climate. But it's not averages that matter, it's summers like twenty nineteen that matter. And, you know, we know that on the, the, the analysis and the, the work that's been done on climate impacts on the Chugatch, that we're going to have, while things are going to be generally wetter and generally slightly warmer, they're also going to have, we're going to have more extreme events where it's very dry and where it's very wet. So none of that has been incorporated at all into this modeling.
Yeah.
But it's not that, and, and it could be that actually, if you incorporate all of that, risk's actually a little higher than it's shown. But that work has not been done. And the, the, the analysis that's in there just does not incorporate the most significant difference between Goodwood and the rest of the muni, and the rest of the municipality. And it actually acknowledges that in the narrative, but then doesn't use that information. So that puts everything here into question, I think, with respect to Goodwood. And we don't want to minimize it because work is important and mitigation is important. But I don't think, as Kai said in our meeting on Monday, the, the sort of standard cookie cutter approaches to mitigation are things that the, the community through the comprehensive plan does not support and clearly stated they does not support. It is the opposite of the, of the, of the sort of vision for the community. So this needs to be more than just, you know, take, take our standard, you know, two, three and four, take our standard couple of items off the shelf and just apply them to Goodwood, which is what this document has done.
Well, we only have a few minutes left.
Yeah.
Mike, so I guess I'd like to hear from the board what you're comfortable with doing next. And at this meeting, for example, tonight, and, and where they've published otherwise, the, the contractor has said they will not change the hazard rates chart, but we could still make comments about the climate that they've already acknowledged in the, in the plan. And maybe they would see that, that flaw because it is. And I, I don't know what else to say right now about it. Because I'd like to hear from Brian or Kelly.
I would say, you know, I haven't had a chance to catch up to all of it. So on the one hand, I would love to look through it all and, you know, if there's a time we can vote on it. I don't know if we have any meetings to vote on it before the date. That said, I tend to trust your assessment and you're deeper in all of it. And the conversation we just had about the comprehensive plan, I mean, I'm also willing to just vote in favor of trusting you because I do. So, but I just want to acknowledge it's not because I've done a deep dive and my due diligence. It's just that I respect your work.
Thank you, Kelly. And yes, there's not another, like, this meeting was an extra one. So that's hence the, the urgency on it a week ago when it was only released, not even a week ago. Okay, sorry, Brian?
I'm going to second what Kelly said.
Okay. All right, well, I can move this letter and, and then we, as the writer of the letter, and then if there's any amendments.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, Margaret, and then any further discussion on the letter?
I just wanted, as, as a an editing item, I think that with a really long set of comments like that, it can be really hard for the people who are reading them to take seriously your most important point. And I would say that probably, you know, hitting that at the very beginning.
Okay.
And saying, you know, there's a flaw in the way that this is only a big dudler. There's a flaw in the way that this is being presented because of the cookie cutter approach. And we need to amend that in order for this to be something that the community can support. Something along those lines.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, I think, I think if we, we could probably just change, change the very beginning of the letter to emphasize the most salient points. And then either, then the rest of the letter works exactly as it does. It could be a table, it doesn't matter though.
Okay, and I knew Margaret was super busy this week, but her editing is paramount. So I'm happy to help fix that first paragraph and thank you for your support, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Let's, we do have a motion on the table in a second, so any more discussion on this? So if I just make a friendly amendment, perhaps the, I think what we have is we would be approving the letter subject to Brianna just bringing the salient points up to the beginning of it.
Yes.
That is everyone's understanding, okay. Brian, did you have your comment? I saw you. So you might come on. Okay, thanks. Let's do this as a roll call then, please. Kyle?
You're muted. Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Kelly Oknak?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Agington?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. I'd entertain a motion to, well, I guess, public comment, any public comment? This is directed to Mark.
I, I actually do have, I, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
Thank you.
I'm working on a, at least a concept for my chief for a project on Crow Creek Road with Holton Hills starting development. I just want to have a little forward thinking because it'll probably end up doubling traffic when full build out. So I probably will send you guys an email requesting some information. Because I, I don't think, I guess my one question is, is the, is the Crow Creek neighborhood plan still, would, would that still be a useful document to reference?
On principle, I don't support referencing it. It exists, but I don't, I don't support referencing it because we as a community, I think should stand firm in our assessment that it, it's no longer valid and referencing it is inappropriate.
Yeah, yeah, I saw your resolution on it, so that's why I ask. But, but you do have the new comprehensive plan, so, or area plan.
Comprehensive plan definitely, definitely is relevant.
Okay, so just so you know, it's on the, I mean, this is, we're talking probably a decade or so before anything happens. But I just wanted to get a need ID and maybe put it in our new tenure plan and have it out somewhere. Because I, as, you know, once they eventually try to connect to Crow Creek, we're going to, we're going to require a traffic study. And obviously, like, something like Crow Creek probably is not, at least that section is not really suited to probably handle all the new traffic. I mean, you guys can argue that it is, but I, so I want to make sure that.
My understanding is that the. But I don't think, I could be wrong and things could have changed. But the official positioning from the project was that they're not going to make that connection to Crow Creek until like phase three.
Yeah, it'll be phase three.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not sure it's overwhelmingly timely issue, but I don't know, yeah, so.
Well, you know, you're right, Kelly. But the problem is, I don't want it to like be five years down the road or ten years down the road when they do it. And we're like, oh, well, we should do something here. I want to have, I want to have it acknowledged that we're forward looking that it's probably, nothing's probably.
I think it's way better and, and putting the requirement for a traffic study in now so that when they get to making plans for that, there's a document to reference. I think it's fantastic. So I'm, I'm hugely supportive.
Oh, thank you.
And I, you're, you're looking further than I am.
Well, I think that'll be part of our comments. Like, I don't think we're, and I know the muni is not requiring one in phase one. But when they try to connect to Crow Creek, we probably, like, our traffic and safety engineer will probably require it, so.
Yeah, there is, I think there is, sorry, Mark.
Oh, I'm just saying, like, I don't know when phase three is going to start. I don't know when they're going to try to punch the road all the way through, you know, to make that connection either. So whether that's part of phase two or that'll, that'll be part of phase three.
In the discussions I've heard, it's phase two. And the phase three would be, would be, wouldn't start until after there's a connection. Are you aware of the, there are some ongoing discussions between D N R, D O T and the muni attorney about responsibilities and ownership of the road?
I, I don't know where it's at, I do know.
They're just ongoing.
Right, yes, I know.
Probably is for, it's the section further north than the one you're discussing. So it probably isn't relevant to your.
We've got that turnaround, like the snowplow turnaround where we have the maintenance end sign. And I know that the, the community up the road is really looking for some kind of support. But that's, yeah, I, I haven't heard where that's at.
Yeah, I think that, those discussions are still ongoing. I think it's, it was on D N R's court last, I know Kyle is more heavily involved in this than I am. But I think it was in D N R's court about relating back to the old mining.
And to be fair, like, this project probably would only support improving that connection up to Crow, up to the Holton Hills connection.
Right.
But.
Yeah.
Now, where we stand on that currently is that the R S, it's been identified that the whole corridor is a R S two four seven seven. And, and D O T has said that they will maintain the road up to historic Crow Creek Mine. But beyond that, they are not claiming responsibility for the road and the subdivision up above. There's some debate that the subdivision is a M O A ownership. But that R S two four seven seven kind of has got everybody tripped up. So legal are working through it right now.
Did you say we, was that D O T or D N R, Kyle?
D N R, D N R made that determination.
Gotcha, that sounds right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, but thank you for making us aware of that, Mark.
You bet.
Much appreciate, always appreciate your input. Okay, there's no further public comment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. I'm going to assume it's second. Yeah, I heard the second, excellent. Thank you, everyone, thanks for great work and thank you, Kyle and Margaret.
Bye.
Bye.